We'll get going here in a minute. We've got to wait for folks to get back to the dais. For everybody who was out there, this was a, the door was locked, one of the government secret rooms. Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call them any of the board supervisors back to order. It is just after 1:30. We're in a Sierra Room at the community center. We're now going to take up the item on our agenda for this afternoon. That's 26 Alpha. This is possible action to select Duncan Golf Management at Eagle Valley as the most responsive and responsible bidder as a result of a request for proposals numbered 1718-096 for the operation, maintenance, and management of Eagle Valley Golf Course. And that's what we're on today. Speaks about the RFP. We have a couple, one disclosure anyway before we get on. So Laura, you want to talk about that one?
Sure. Thank you. NRS 281A 420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my public official capacity as supervisor, I was appointed to and served until July of this year on the Board of Directors for the Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation, the operator of the Carson City Municipal Golf Course. Since I served in my public capacity, yet this is a private nonprofit corporation, it was unclear from the ethics law and from the Commission on Ethics prior opinions whether I was conflicted from participating in this matter. Out in abundance of caution, I sought an advisory opinion from the Commission on Ethics. The Commission found that my prior relationship with the Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation entailed a hybrid of public and private duties. However, since that relationship has concluded and I have no current commitment, I am able to participate. The matter reformed will not be affected by my prior relationship with Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation. As such, I will be participating and voting on this specific item.
Any other disclosures? Okay. This afternoon, what we're going to do is we're going to hear a presentation from staff, give us an update of where we are, and hear their presentation, hear questions, then we'll be taking public testimony, public comment, not testimony necessarily, but public comment. A few rules on public comment. One, we generally try not to limit everybody to three minutes a person. Generally try not to do that with the following caveats. One, we ask that you, one, stay on point. This is an issue with respect to whether or not an RFP, a response, whether or not there should be an acceptance of this response to an RFP that was put out. A couple of other ones is that we ask that you be not repetitive to other speakers. If you have one speaker that wants to speak for all of you or a group of you, that's fine, but you may also do it yourselves. Just don't try not to be repetitive. Don't attack other speakers. You can attack us if you'd like. Try not to attack other speakers because at the end of the day, this afternoon, even though we're taking public comment, this is a business meeting, a business meeting, and we intend to operate it like that. Which means also, no clapping, no stamping of the feet. We want them to come to a reasoned decision on this. I know that golf is, you know, by the attendance in this, in the room today, golf can be a sensitive issue, but we want to do this in a professional, businesslike manner. Okay, so with that in mind, we'll start here and go. Okay? Ms. Raider, you're going to take us through the RFP process?
Start it off. I am, yeah. Laura Raider, purchasing and contracts. This is to select Duncan Golf Management DBA TDS Golf at Eagle Valley LLC as a result of RFP 1718-096 for operations, maintenance, and management of the Eagle Valley Golf Course and to authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of this Carson City a temporary right of entry agreement and direct staff to draft a five-year license agreement with the terms consistent with the RFP and proposal submitted by Duncan Golf for future consideration by the Board of Supervisors. And Jen Budge is going to be giving a PowerPoint presentation for further information.
Thank you, Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, can't talk. Members of the Board, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. I'd like to just take you through a PowerPoint so you can know what process we went through, what steps we did to reach out to the public about this process, as well as the current operator, and then just some basic facts about the property and especially the water that we have. So just to set the stage. This is a property map. The course is located in Northern Carson City. Eagle Valley Golf Course is approximately 370 acres of land. It's adjacent to BLM public lands, also adjacent to the city's trap and skeet range, as well as Centennial Park. This is the same map that you saw previously, but with the parcel boundaries on, so slightly different. Eagle Valley Golf Course is comprised of six parcels. The property was acquired through a combination of land patents through the Omnibus Public Lands Management Act of 2009, land patent for recreation and public purposes through the BLM, a gift deed from the John D. Winters Family Trust, and property purchased by using, from the city using residential construction tax or park tax, as many people refer to it. The land on which Eagle Valley East is located was deeded with, to the city with the condition that it be used for the open space and public recreation purposes only, and the land for Eagle Valley West was deeded to the city with golf as its express purpose. I know this is kind of hard to see, but it does note the reclaimed and affluent water infrastructure and key components that are already into the property. This location is the first land disposal site created specifically for the disposal of reclaimed water for the city. It's an integrable, integral part of the disposal inventory in the city's affluent master plan. It consumes approximately 25% of the total available affluent to irrigate from reclaimed water. The average reclaimed water usage averages 816 acre-feet per year and 213 acres of land that it covers. There's approximately 213 acres of vegetation through turf and trees and other vegetation that are watered from the affluent here at the site. The total affluent water use for the entire city is 3,134 acre-feet at 1,084 acres of So for the public outreach and operation, the current operator, I do want to just take a moment, not only to thank everybody that's here in the room, but I really wanted to acknowledge the Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation. They've been operating the facility, maintaining it, managing it on their own as a private nonprofit with volunteers from our community for the last 20 years, and that's really a tremendous accomplishment. So I don't want to discount today any of the effort that they've put forward, and I really wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge them and thank them for everything that they've done. So the current agreement with the Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation expires December 31st, 2017, which is why we're here today. Staff really wanted to make sure this was an open and transparent process. Any question that I've received, and I've received hundreds of emails, phone calls, I've met with citizens about this, they're very passionate and interested in this golf course, which is just so important, and that's why the room's filled today. But we wanted to have an open and transparent process. So we did notify the Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation of our intent to go to an RFP. We did this both verbally and in writing. We met with them several times. We've had site visits. We continue to have ongoing conversations with the current operator. Concurrently, we also sent out a community survey with 629 responses, and that's really tremendous. Most of the surveys we get, we maybe get 100, 200 at most. So we had a huge response on that. That survey was noticed on the city website, social media, Carson Now and Nevada Appeal were really great in helping us get the word out. We also sent it to 903 people on the Eagle Valley database as well, and we had several email distribution. I know many of the board of supervisors helped us get the word out about this survey, and just word of mouth really got that sort of response. So just to highlight the committee survey and continue to give some kudos to the current operator, and they should really be thankful. These are just a screenshot, and I know it's kind of hard to read. Over four of the questions, we had 19 questions on the survey, and then we also compiled the surveys from Golf Now and Yelp about what, just what the public, what visitors thought of the golf course and its conditions. So the Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation should really be commended for the complimentary survey results. From fees to customer service and management, results were really favorable. So that salmon-colored part of the pie chart, that meant that they strongly agree and they felt, you know, something was going well. The primary concerns on the other end were the bunkers, staff changes, golf carts, and then pro-shop limitations, which are things that, you know, struggles part of it just due to the facility and some other challenges. We distributed the request for proposal, or RFP, on October 4th, 2017, and that RFP was distributed in the Nevada Appeal. We sent it out to the PGA Northern California section, which is Nevada, Oregon, and California, and through the Golf Course Owners Association. So we did a huge distribution. It also had a lot of just word of mouth and email, you know, distribution. I sent it to every golf course owner in town, also to Washto County, Reno, and other area golf courses in the region. We had two pre-proposal meetings and site visits, and we received three written proposals or statements of qualifications, one from Duncan Golf Management, Touchstone Golf, and Reliance Golf. The review and selection committee consisted of city staff from Parks, Public Works, Purchasing Administration, as well as an outside technical expert in municipal golf administration. The committee reviewed and scored those three written proposals. We also provided an opportunity for them to come in and do a 30-minute presentation and 30 minutes of an interview and questions from the review committee. So it was a pretty thorough, thorough process. The determination was based on the following criteria, as outlined in the RFP, which were qualifications, staffing and maintenance, financial and operational capability, value and innovation, marketing, youth and community engagement, and a few other details, including financial stability and experience with affluent and other things in the region. So the selection of Duncan Golf, how do we get to where we are with this recommendation today? Duncan Golf met all the requirements outlined in the RFP. They have proven success in the golf course operation and industry. They demonstrated financial stability. They proposed reinvestment in equipment and capital needs, which is a huge issue at the course right now. They had the lowest financial risk to the taxpayers and to Carson City as compared to the other two proposals. There's a comprehensive transition plan. Their level of service standards for maintenance far exceeded the other two proposals, and they're available January 1st, limiting impacts to the golf course in play to continue to have the facility open and available for the public. They also have experience with affluent water regulations in Nevada, which is obviously very important to us, given the nature of the site. The terms of the proposal, some highlights are $90,000 annual payment to be reinvested annually in equipment. The equipment would become city assets for available use at the golf course. There'd be joint capital investment between the city and between Duncan. After three years, 10% of net operating income would be toward that capital investment and improvements. Those capital improvements would be agreed upon and prioritized between the city and the operator. It would be a partnership in developing that, that capital list. They have proposed a really smooth transition plan and are available immediately after the current agreement expires. They've already started reaching out to the current staff and to the current board members of the Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation, just being very open and available and recognizing that these are people's jobs that, that are so important and they're part of our community and they want to help take care of them. So they've already started having those conversations. I do have people here from Duncan Golf, and we have a number of city staff. Should questions go in areas that Laura and I might not be able to answer? But that concludes my presentation.
Do you want to talk about the license agreement? Who's going to do that?
The license agreement? Sure.
Right of entry. I call it license.
Oh, sure. We can talk about that. So you have a draft right-of-entry agreement, which, this is a temporary agreement up to 90 days. There has been a few changes back and forth. We've had some suggestions too from the board members. Those have all been incorporated. You have a red line version. We made copies. There's also copies available for the public, and that's been posted as late material as well. This is a 90-day agreement. It allows Duncan to enter the property and to assume operations on sort of a minimal level, be able to keep the course open, and try to reduce the impacts to the public. This agreement has that in mind, and that's a particular focus. Concurrently, should you approve this agreement and staff's recommendation today, we'll work with Duncan's staff and their attorney in developing a five-year license agreement for your future consideration.
Okay. Okay. All right. Questions? Anybody? Brad?
Going back to joint capital improvements after three years will be 10% of net operating income. Do we have an agreement on what constitutes net operating income? In other words, we need to have an agreement in advance on what light items are allowed and which are not in calculating the NOI?
We could, I might ask Nancy to jump in on that, but we can definitely define that, and we can include that in the license agreement. So we have clear definitions, what constitutes a capital improvement, what constitutes maintenance, really dividing those definitions up.
Right. Tied to the separation of responsibilities?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question that relates to that, but Duncan Golf may have to answer it. With relation to the joint capital improvements after three years and looking through the agreement, just wondering in terms of the clubhouse and what you're going to do in the off-season to help boost the economy of the golf course. So will there be any improvements to the clubhouse? Is there any thought with regards to that? If anyone can answer that, that would be helpful.
While you're coming to the table, I should mention that walking in the door back there is a former mayor of Carson City, Doc Scrivener. Hello, Doc. Okay.
I'll come back on here.
All right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Karen. We do have intentions to approve the entire facility, not just the food and beverage part of it, but particularly the golf part of it, and we're going to start with that. And then we'll have a year to get, to get ready for next winter's activities. The information that we do have regarding some of these social functions has been a little limited, so I can't tell you exactly what to expect, other than the fact that we'll, we will try to improve the facility.
The reason I ask is just because, you know, we are limited in terms of any sort of convention space.
Right.
And any places to hold weddings. And so, you know, it's just a thought process, and I know what you've done on your other courses in terms of that, so that's why I asked the question.
Well, thank you for asking. We do have a person dedicated specifically for that role in our current company, so we expect her to be busy at Eagle Valley as well as the rest of facilities.
And Tom, just for the record, I need you to state your name so that the recorder can pick it up.
Tom Duncan with Duncan Golf.
Thank you.
Welcome. Laura.
So my question kind of would be more in, this starts on January 1st for the transition. I received a call from someone earlier this week indicating that they had called the golf course. I think it was on Sunday, and no one was answering. So are you saying that the Golf Corporation is going to operate it right up to the 31st, and then it flips the switch on the 1st? I need to be clear on the, on that.
Thank you Supervisor Bagwell, Jennifer Budge, for the record. We have been talking to the Carson City Municipal Golf Corporation. They might not be able to operate through the end of the month. So the city manager, the deputy city manager, staff, and myself have been trying to work on some contingency plans, so we don't have any disruption to the course. So we have it open and available. We want to make sure things are taken care of. We don't have any issues with it being vacant from a public safety standpoint. So we have come up with several different options and hiring on an interim basis for the couple of weeks, should they close the doors and not be able to operate, so we can keep it available at a very skeleton crew, three to four staff.
You mean the city hiring them, or that we?
The city.
Infuse a little money to the Golf Corporation for them to keep them?
The city. Seasonal temporary employees.
Well, just, I'm just thinking out loud that potentially, wouldn't you want to just leave them with the Golf Corporation and might have, you're saying they don't have the ability to make the payment?
They might not, they might not have the ability to fully staff through the end of their agreement, so we've been trying to actively work with them on a contingency plan.
Okay. I'm just suggesting that you look at the option of, instead of the city hiring them and figuring out how to take the revenue in for playing golf and ledgers and all that good kind of stuff, I don't know, that it might be more advantageous to provide the few thousand dollars or whatever it is to the corporation to keep them. Just a thought out there. I, like you said, I understand what you're trying to accomplish.
Sure.
I just want to make sure we're doing that in the most efficient and effective method too. Because you don't think that they, you're planning on doing golf starting January 1st. Is that correct? That people could play golf January 1st under the Duncan Management Group?
Yes, ma'am.
So you don't feel like you might need a week anyway with no golf to do the inventories? Do, I'm just talking about that.
We're working with Duncan Golf on that transition and sort of the logistics of that that wouldn't be in the agreement. We've already talked about, you know, doing a walkthrough and checklists and condition and, and that transition, and, you know, I'd love to do that day one and be able to get that in there. The first day of their right-of-entry agreement, really go through all that, but staff needs to obviously do some things before that happens as well, to be able to make sure we have, have that smooth transition. And we've already discussed, you know, there's a lot, we have a huge list of things that we kind of need to logistically work through, and those are some of those issues.
And then just maybe one other potential, and I don't know, if the Golf Corporation can't sustain the operation through December 31st is another option, it's just on the, sorry, didn't think about this beforehand. Why not let you start December 15th?
The new operator, the new operator prefers to come in January 1st.
Okay. I'm just throwing it out there. Why not come in a little early and do all that priest, anyway?
We did talk about that.
Okay. I'm just throwing it out there, Mr. Duncan.
Well, thank you for throwing it out there. We're, we're in the process of applying for all our business licenses, and we're waiting actually until today's results to move forward, both the liquor license and the business license. So as soon as we get those, we'd be glad to try to help out.
So if it happened prior to January 1st and the Golf Corporation approved it, we could say if mutually agreed upon, it could be earlier?
We could say that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan, could you, you have, you have other golf courses that you own or manage, right?
Yes.
Could you give me a sense of if this is awarded to Duncan Golf? Give me a sense of satisfaction call like that, that sufficient attention's going to be paid to the Carson City Golf Course?
Yeah, it's a good question. It comes up all the time. We feel it's a real benefit to our company, and we feel that we're an asset to Eagle Valley to be able to incorporate additional benefits for our golfers in Carson City, potential golfers in Carson City to have additional facilities. As we get busy and there, there's needs for other places to play, so folks don't go a week or two without being able to play because of outside events, we'll be able to supply our golf courses and make them available at a discount for the folks that are members at Eagle Valley. So that's one of our assets. It's important to us, it's going to be a reflection of our, our work ethic and our results, to have the golf course back to where it was when, prior, earlier this year, and get the flow going back like it should be. Golf, when I was here first, back in 1981, I think we got it as high as 90,000 rounds in one year. There's been several other golf courses built during that time, which obviously would take away some, from some of the business, but, you know, everybody's done a good job in Carson City. It's a big attraction. Eagle Valley's been a tremendous asset in Carson City, and we'd like to get it back to where it needs to be.
What are the, in your opinion, what are the benefits or drawbacks of a municipal golf?
I don't know of any drawbacks.
And compare that?
Providing that the golf course is able to sustain.
And compare that to privately owned golf courses that aren't operated as a municipal golf course?
Well, I, being in the private business, we get, we look at it, and we might have other options where municipality might not have options through wages, through overtime, through benefits, through pay schedules. Having worked both in the public and private sector as an operator, it might be just a bit easier to, to work in the private sector.
Tom, I'm not sure how it works with your other golf courses, but I know that in the past, the Culture and Tourism Authority has worked tightly with a golf course in terms of tournaments, putting heads in beds, that sort of thing.
Right.
Are you accustomed to dealing in that same type of?
Yeah, one of our strengths over the years is, is having repeat customers. When we first moved to Northern Nevada back in 1981, I think there were 21 or 22 outside events that came to Carson City. We've had it as high as 400 or 500 events that would come every single year. And in fact, now that we have, this will be four golf courses, you know, we'll probably have 20,000 to 25,000 rounds of golf. That'll be from what we call tournament golf, or organized groups from outside the daily events. So, and, and folks don't come to Carson or Reno anymore for one day, you know, they'll come for three or four days, and they'll want to play as many golf courses as they possibly can. And as a convenience, you know, having one place to shop and being able to direct the golf to three or four different golf courses is very pleasing to the customer as well.
I think I'll wait for some other questions, but thank you very much. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. Now we'll take some public comment. Come on up. Just, everybody come up, and the regular drill is push the red button or the button, turn on a red light, and state your name so we know what the minutes can pick it up.
Sam Lehman. I guess if I leave it on, it stays on?
Yeah.
Okay. I am semi-retired, and I moved down here from Washington, so I'm kind of an outsider looking in. But just to let you know briefly about me, I'm a professional golfer, a Class A superintendent. I've managed several golf courses in Washington State and Oregon. I had a concern, no disrespect to Mr. Duncan, but Indeed.com is a national employment website, and the rating for Duncan is very, very bad. I'm hoping maybe there's something you can change, but employees were very dissatisfied with that company, and if I was looking for employment and having read what the information on that website, I would not apply for a job with Duncan Golf. I also know, because I also work part-time with Montreux Country Club out of Reno, that if you don't have happy employees, if they're not making a wage that allows them to enjoy a quality of life, it's going to reflect on the people who come to play there. And if people aren't happy and don't enjoy their experience at the golf course, they're going to go somewhere else. And so it's important that you have happy employees, because then that reflects on the golf, and then you're busy. That's something that's extremely important to Montreux. Every day, we go out of our way to make sure that the members have a good experience, no matter how well or how poorly they play the game. So that being said, I wanted to ask the committee if they had really considered running the golf course as a city. I can offer you that Prineville, Oregon, has an 18-hole golf course. They use recycled water or affluent on their golf course. It is a well-run machine. The employees are happy, they're extremely busy, their banquet rooms are always booked. And also, I could even tell you, there's, in Kent, Washington, they also, a city that has their own golf courses. So there are cities that can run these courses very well. Your Parks and Rec Department has got all the equipment, except for greensmoors practically, to manage this course. From what I've seen, it looks like your backs are against the wall here, but I caution you about rushing into a decision. $90,000 is a drop in a bucket when it comes to equipment. The little I know about this course is it's pretty rundown. I imagine that $90,000, $20,000 buys you a good greensmore, maybe another $20,000 for a good tractor, but you're talking a lot of equipment, probably a lot of things that need to be fixed if I were to go in here and shop and look around.
Did you participate in the walkthroughs at all? When the, during the RFP process, did you participate in the walkthroughs to see what's out there?
I didn't.
Okay, I'm just, okay.
I've just kind of been listening to other people who are members and their input of what they've told me.
Okay, all right.
But I just kind of have a sense for that, just from what I'm hearing.
I'm sure they probably told you also that Carson City at one time did operate a golf course.
Huh.
And kind of went away from that.
Okay. But there may be some things you can learn from other cities that are successful.
Okay. All right. All right, I got you. I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
Thank you. And I'd be willing to even offer my services to the city, just if you need it.
Okay. Anybody else with public comment? Mr. Glover. Every time I see you, I think of high school.
Yeah. I was an angel, wasn't I?
I don't know about that.
Good afternoon, board members and Mr. Mayor. I'm Bruce Glover, a lifelong resident of Carson City. I started playing golf at, right here, this was the sixth green, as a matter of fact. So I played golf in Carson all my life, and golf means a lot to the people in Carson City. Carson City has an 18-hole golf course that old people can go walk every day. You don't find that in many places. They enjoy it, they deserve it. It's about them. Golf is about this community. As for Mr. Duncan, I had the pleasure of working for Mr. Duncan at Silver Oak when he opened it. I found no finer man to work for. He was good to all of us, he was honest with us, he was firm sometimes, but he was Mr. Duncan, and that course got established pretty well. I don't think it's up to the standards it meets since he left, but that's another story. I do believe it is our obligation to approve this today, to get him on board, so that we can start golfing in a manner that we are accustomed to. I worked, I was assigned to the board that governs the golf course in April, after Mr. Kepler was dismissed, and I find that, and not to knock, but there was, after Mr. Kepler left, there was little knowledge of how to run a golf course. Everybody thinks you can just come in and run it like a business. It's not that way. You have to know what you're doing. And I think Mr. Duncan, through his expertise and through his companies, can well represent the city and give us something that we should be proud of. I can remember back in the days when tournaments just flowed in here, his successor was equally as good as doing that. If it's up to the city running it, if what we had was representative of the city, no, thank you. I think we need somebody private like Mr. Duncan to come in and do a good job for us. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Bruce.
You bet, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We went to school, for all you folks out there, we went to school together. I mean, I don't know which is older, which is, who's older or younger, but, okay, public comment, further public comment? Anybody? Mr. Kepler, come on up. Afternoon, Jim.
My name is Jim Kepler, and I've been in this area since Mr. Duncan hired me in about 1986. I was originally hired by the Orangeberry House to bring golf groups into the area. The golf courses are flourishing, and casinos, I didn't know it, not all the casinos, some of the casinos weren't very adept at bringing groups in, so we helped them bring groups in because we had connections in Northern California. The reason I came down here today is because Tom was the second-best bidder, obviously, but I'm glad Tom got it, because Tom and I are very close friends. He is a truly great operator in Northern Nevada. He has some, the best golf course in Reno he operates, exception of, I guess, some clubs called Montreux and stuff that you have to pay 1,200 bucks to be a member of a month. You know, we're talking about everyday golfers. Eagle Valley Golf Course is a finance facility that I've been associated with in the Western United States, from a standpoint of what it's capable of doing. I've been on the Northern California Board, I've been the president of the section, I have been Pro of the Year, and his company's going to do a great job running it. Do I think that we have a problem in the city? Yeah. The problem in the city is not everybody plays golf, but you'd be amazed how many people do play golf. We had, when we started this new club called the 50 Mile Club, we had, one year we had 1,800 people join it. You have a private corporation that you handed the keys to almost 30, 20-something years ago, they paid you people $3.5 million, and you want more. Well, you find a golf facility anywhere, anywhere, that's a municipal course in a small town of 60,000 people that paid $3.5 million, that don't exist. But the number of people that play out there, if you're golfers, you come out, sometimes the parking lot's full, you got to park in the street. It is a viable property, so many people have been playing here for 40 years. You need to pass it today and get on with it, and you need to stay in the business and run the city and let golfers run the golf course. It's going to be full, and it can show you opportunities you won't believe. You can do concerts out there, you can do weddings out there, you can do a lot of stuff out there that even private courses can't do because of the amount of property you have out there. The citizens support the golf course that play there. Now, I don't know, I don't swim much, so I don't know how the pool does. I don't play tennis, so I don't go out to tennis courts right on my property out there, but I'm a golfer, and there's lots of golfers that are out there. Some of them play out there since day one. The ex-mayor walks the, still walks, well, he's having a little bit of trouble right now, but he still walks the east courts whenever he can, and he's 95 years old. And he's, he put the course out there. It's time for the golf, to get back in the golf people's hands and let them run it properly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kepler. Okay. Other public comment? All right. Anything further from the staff? Other questions? Don't see any? All right, board, what do you want to do? Motion's in order.
I move to select Duncan Golf Management, DBA TDS Golf at Eagle Valley LLC, as the most responsive and responsible bidder, as a result of request for proposal numbers 1718-096 for operation, maintenance, and management of Eagle Valley Golf Course, and to authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city a temporary right-of-entry agreement, and direct staff to draft a five-year license agreement with terms consistent with RFP number 1718-06096, and the proposal submitted by Duncan Golf Management for future consideration by the Board of Supervisors, including the right-of-entry agreement for the purposes of limited operation that was handed out immediately proceeding to this agenda item as late material.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion's in order.
And that it can be sooner than January 1st if mutually agreed to.
Two minutes.
Yeah, on that discussion point, you know, I'm not, I shouldn't say about golf, but talk about golf for me, because I don't do it anymore, but I was, I ran into somebody at an office I was visiting the other day, and this lady said she had golfed at Eagle Valley for a long time. She was raised around here. And her comment was, whatever you do, try not to make sure, try not to have a break-in service for the golf, because they want to play. Okay? All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Carried. Anything further to come before the board this afternoon? Seeing none. Are we ready to adjourn? Unless there's an objection, we're adjourned.
Last public comment, Mayor.
Wait a minute, final public comment, thanks. Final public comment. Anybody before you leave? This is concluding public comment. I don't see anybody. Everybody understand what I'm saying? Concluding public comment, it's just at the end of the agenda. Okay, I don't see any. All right. We're done. Adjourned.